All right.
Are we broadcasting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. So I'm calling to order the Common Council Ordinance Committee today, which is August 18th. It is 7:01 and I'm going to take a roll call. And we'll start with David Hovman.
Present.
Dominique Johnson.
Present.
Tom Keegan.
Here.
Manny Langella.
Here.
Tom Livingston.
Here.
Kadim Roberts.
Here.
And Lisa Shanahan are here. And the first thing on our list is a public hearing. So we're to discuss and vote the Code of Ethics Section 32-8 Prohibited Gifts. And I don't know that we have anybody who's here to comment, but can we?
There are no attendees from the public currently.
Then it would appear that we have no public comment. Brian mentioned before that he didn't have any emails to discuss. And so we could take a look at and decide whether we want to vote our Section 32-8 prohibited gifts onto the Common Council for adoption. And I think Tom and I had a couple of just little nitpicks. So Tom, I'll let you nitpick first and then I'll nitpick.
Okay, give me a second. He's going to get this, the screen, two screens. So, okay, so just go in. On the, okay, it says 32-8A. I gotta nitpick and have a question, but let's just go through this. On the, it's just hard. So in the second line, we should, we suggest we add a comma after the word "not," shall not, comma, directly or indirectly, "except when you give form of service compensation, any kind of a property, blah, blah, blah." That's first thing.
Brian, do you see that? Are you following us?
Yeah, it's the second line, "shall not," comma, directly or indirectly.
Right. And then on the second last line, "anyone or any institution," delete the comma, I think you have there.
Yeah, that should have been crossed out before it was.
Yeah, so that's still there. And then...
And then, Tom, can I interrupt you because I'm still in paragraph A with one little nitpick, or two little nitpicks there? Nitpick number one is that in that paragraph, paragraph A, as opposed to other paragraphs, we say responsibilities and other places we say responsibility. I mean, it's such a nitpick, but should we be consistent?
We should be consistent.
Okay, so I would change that just to responsibility. And then my question is, when we recur to, when we refer to our ordinance code, do we capitalize that or is that a lowercase?
Where is that?
The very last word of paragraph A.
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
So whatever the answer is, if you would just fix it for when we send it to council.
Sure.
And I'm done with that, Tom, if you want to go forward with other places.
Yeah, then just B after the word "shall," no officer or employee, "shall," comma, knowingly or unknowingly, and a comma there. Okay, and then moving down to, let's see, the new, I guess it's six, paragraph 6 under C.
Yeah.
Recognition incentive program. I don't think that's defined anywhere. I would make that a lowercase.
You're correct. It's not, it is not a defined term.
Yeah. Going down, this is the, we had this, this is, was in there. It says, "Printed or recorded information photographs or maps germane to governmental actions or functions." This, I'm looking how this works, the language, "notwithstanding the foreword," and the subsection does not prohibit the following. Printed or, what do you mean print? Is it receipt of printed information, recording?
Let me pull up the, I gotta pull up the original version and see if it's even in there.
I don't think it is.
What are we trying to capture with that?
Well, that's my question.
I mean, if they give you a pretty picture of the harbor, is that something that's considered a freebie?
Let me just go back up to the top here. Hold on one second.
Yeah. It was added in.
I don't know the origin of why that was added in. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the edits and that was added in prior to my, prior to me getting involved. So I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I'm not against it. I don't think it's harmful, but I just thought it was a little change, too.
Yeah, I mean...
Lisa, where are we looking? I'm sorry.
It's on, it's number 11.
11.
11, okay.
So it actually is in the, it is, it is in the current code, under prohibited gifts, 32-8 subsection A. And then if you go down to number 11, it says, "Printed or recorded information, photographs, and maps germane to governmental action or functions." I don't know why it's redlined, but that's actually, it's actually in the code currently.
Okay.
I'm not even sure that was changed. It might have been...
And then somebody took people's photographs and they consider it a gift, so...
Okay. Yeah, it was just that it was, it was highlighted. The only question I want to raise to the committee, and I don't feel strongly about this, is the awards and certificates are limited, are limited to $200, whereas the meals are $150 per year. We want them to be consistent? Do they need to be consistent? Do we care?
I'm open to discussion. Does anybody have strong thoughts about that?
I mean, I don't have real strong thoughts. I just wanted to raise it because they're both benefits being accorded to the officers and employees, but they're different values. And I don't know if there's a reason for that. If nobody cares, just leave it as it is.
I don't have a feeling one way or the other. I mean, they're two separate distinct things which, you know, could, you know, you can argue that they have different monetary values, causes, you know, one to...
Okay, we can just leave it.
So just, just...
Other comments other than Tom and me about...
Just to, just to answer Tom's question real quick, in the, in the current version, we had increased the, the gift not exceeding $50. Now it's, let me find it again, hold on. The gift goes from $50 to $150. And in the current section, which is down at the bottom, certificate plaques or other ceremonial awards having a value of not more than $200. So again, that was, that number came from, that number came from the code itself. So yes, there is a disconnect between the $150 and the $200. We, the Board of Ethics thought, raised the number from 50 to 150 and they didn't change, they didn't want to bring down the number of 200, which was, which was already there. But that's, that's how that came to be, it came to be.
Oh, thank you. That's helpful, Brian.
Yep.
Great. Any other comments or nitpicks from any of you?
No.
What I'd like to do is take a vote to move this on to Common Council with those tiny administrative little changes. Can, do I have a motion?
I'll vote with those changes.
Okay, great. And can we just do it on a voice call? Hands in favor? Anybody against moving it? All right, that's a unanimous vote to move that on to Common Council. All right, so our next, I did that right, right? So our next agenda item is now the acceptance of the minutes. And talk about nitpicking, I'm all over it. Sorry to have a few comments on that. So I guess I'll go first and then whoever has other nitpicks, they can let me know. Under the public hearing discussion, it was...
Page is that, Lisa?
It's on page two and it's paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, under public hearing discussion. It says, "Mr. Keegan asked about the sunset provision." And then it says, "Mr. Candela explained that the Common Council," and it says, "could do a process to repeal." I didn't, I just think we should delete the words "do a process" and just say, "the Common Council could repeal the amendment before the 11th year." Does that make sense?
So the Common Council could repeal the amendment before the 11th year?
Take the words "do a process" and just say "could repeal." And then I'd say, the next thing, "Mr. Candela noted that even if this item," I would say, "even if this ordinance is approved by the Common Council," going from there. So exchange the word "ordinance" for "item."
Hold on one second. What was the next part? It was same, same page paragraph?
Yep, next sentence, it says, "you noted that even if this item," I want to exchange the word "ordinance" for "item."
Ordinance for item, okay.
And then in the next paragraph, I want to add the following words to that last, to that one, the second sentence. "The mayor and Common Council will get a report every three years," and then I, this is my addition, "with regard to what projects have received benefits and its impact."
Can you read that to me one more time?
Sure. I'm adding "with regard to what projects have received benefits and its impact."
Benefits and its impact. And that's in page two, paragraph six?
Yes.
You want to add before every three years, the words "at least"?
Yes. Let's do that.
At least every three years? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on page four, second paragraph, it says, "Ms. Shanahan explained that she's been asked by Mayor Reeling to address issues." I would just add the word "hunting issues" before.
Hunting issues, okay.
And then if you go down, 1, 2, 6 paragraphs, "Mr. Hovman said that he would like information on hunting from a boat." I think it's, I think the next word would be "he," not "she."
He, not she. And that's in page four, paragraph six?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have two more little nitpicks. On page five, "The committee members went into executive session at," I believe it was 8:01.
8:01, as opposed to what time?
8:19, which is when we came out of executive session.
Enter and 8:19, exit, executive session.
And then if you go down, 1, 2, 3 paragraphs, the second to last sentence says, "appoints Lisa Shanahan and Manny as its designees to," you know, it says "designee," but we should make it plural because there's two.
Designees, not designate, okay.
Okay, so that's nitpicking, but those are all of mine. Does anybody else have any nitpicks they want to add to the, Dominique does?
I did see, yeah, I did see two things. Page four, paragraph two, I just, for my own clarification, said, "Mr. Livingston explained that people can have guns in city buildings." Should that be "cannot" or is it "can"?
It's "can," unless, unless, unless assigned.
Great, okay. So that's nothing to change. And then the other thing would be the last, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 paragraph, page four, "Myself, Ms. Johnson, asked if there were any instances or confusion." I think the last paragraph, the last sentence of that paragraph, I think it was more about complaints about hunters?
Yes, that's right.
Or it could be from, but I intended for it to be like the public about hunting.
Right, okay.
Cool, thank you.
Anybody else while we're at it? Oh, Tom Keegan, Mr. Keegan. You're muted, Mr. Keegan.
How's that better? On page two, on the, under public hearing discussion, second line, it should be Ms. Church, not Mr. Church. "Mr. Livingston noted that Mr. Disgala's property, et cetera..."
Oh, yes, yes.
Ms. Church, okay.
Great. I love that the ordinance people are nitpicks about this. That's awesome. All right, so our next item is to discuss and vote on the Code of Ethics Section 32.
We have to vote on this, Lisa.
Sorry, gang, I did. Absolutely thanks, Tom. Can I have a show of hands for a yes vote on accepting the minutes as amended? All in favor? Manny, are you in or out? Okay, great. So everybody has agreed that the minutes as amended can be accepted. Thanks, Tom. I got ahead of myself. Old business. Now we're going to talk about the Code of Ethics Section 32-4, which is Conflicts of Interest. And I'm not sure that I'm actually ready to move it for a vote because I think we do, it might need a little bit more work. But Brian, do you want to walk us through it? And then I have some questions. Some other committee members might as well.
Sure. So this was on, for those of you who are serving for your first term as Common Council members, Tom Livingston is the only one that would know that this came on once before. This was on during the prior ordinance committee. There were comments made in response to the last version. As a response to those comments, which I think was in early 2019, this section of the code, 32-4, went back to Board of Ethics. Board of Ethics spent at least one, maybe two meetings going over the language. First to look at the recommendations that were made by the ordinance committee. And then they had a chance to think about them and then discuss them. I believe it took two meetings. So what you have in front of you is the Board of Ethics, their changes, their initial changes, and then responses, responsive changes to some of the recommendations made by the ordinance committee. The conflicts of interest specifically, a lot of the questions had to do with, at least some of the questions had to do with Common Council members that are serving on other committees, that are asked to serve on other committees because they're Common Council members, such as example, perhaps Lockwood Matthews Mansion or something along those lines. So there was some concerns about potential conflicts of interest and those, those entities coming in front of the Common Council and then being on both of the boards. And so after that conversation, the Board of Ethics made these changes. Again, all the changes you see in front of you are not just from the conversation following the Common Council, ordinance committee meeting. These are changes that were made before and changes made in response to the ordinance committee the last time it was here. If people have specific, I mean, that's kind of a general background on this because it's been a while since it's been on and since it's been touched even by the Board of Ethics. So if people have specific questions or specific comments, since it's, it sounds like it's not going to go to a vote tonight, if people have comments or concerns or questions, I can bring those back to the Board of Ethics at their next meeting, which I believe will be next week, next Thursday, I believe it's the 27th. If there are no comments, then that's great, but if there are, then I can take them back to the, to that board. And I believe Michael Church is here from the Board of Ethics. So thank you for attending, Michael.
I have a couple of just general comments. I think that there's some drafting that could be done to make it tighter. So I'm not, that's one reason why I'm not that comfortable. One comment that I did have was, "The definition of a conflict of interest is buried in Section A 5 at the very bottom." And I think that ought to be pulled out and made separate, maybe even, you know, under B, put somewhere that seems to be like a natural place for it. I also think that 5 is, it should say, it says, you also, you know, people will, shall avoid, I don't know. I just feel like, I feel like the language needs to be tightened up in a lot of these things. I also want to know a little bit more about Section A 6, if you could kind of get into the weeds of that and trying to figure out what they're after. I'm just going to...
Hold on one, one second. I'm trying to find, to see if there's a definition of, if there's a definition of conflicts of interest, which there isn't. So there's no definition, conflicts of interest does not have a definition within the definitional section in 32-3. So I just wanted to double check on that.
Yeah, because when you go to A 5, it says, "A conflict of interest exists whenever an officer or employee is more likely than not to benefit, blah, blah, blah." And it just, it's kind of buried in there and it, it needs its own place to be highlighted.
That is, in essence, a definition of conflict of interest.
Yes. All right, so 32A 5.
I thought the whole paragraph was hard to understand.
Yeah.
And similar with 6, too. I thought that was...
5 and 6 are sort of dancing the same path, aren't they?
Yeah, I thought, and I thought they were hopelessly, hopelessly convoluted.
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Let me just write this down. Difficult.
Convoluted.
Is that a comment? I think that's, it's not meaning to be pejorative.
And 32A 6, you said?
Yeah. And then I have one more and then I'll open it up for whoever else wants to raise their hand with hopelessly convoluted comments to make. My other one was under C 3.
C.
And when you, the last paragraph says, "We're appropriate in accordance with these Code of Ethics, the officer or employee should make written disclosure of a transaction to the city." And I'm like, why, why should there be a, why shouldn't they always disclose it? Is there a good reason not to disclose it ever? So that was my question for that. All right, so those are my ideas. Does anybody else want to raise their hand with?
Yeah, Lisa and I talked about this a little bit. I just want to comment, like, I agree with what Lisa said. I just want to point out something else. In B, it talks about if an employee has a known conflict of interest, again, not really defined, he or she shall disclose it to the supervisor. And if material, I mean, who's deciding if it's material, then they have to recuse themselves. But it sounds, it just seems like they can, this so, it's so vague in this whole thing, about whether it's a conflict, whether they can vote, how to determine it and so forth. So I think it needs some work. It needs some tightening up.
Can I interject here? It's Michael Church. So to be better assistive to you, you could perhaps provide more guidance. Our thought process was, there are so many different scenarios where this would come up, that it's very difficult to be narrow and specific. So it was intentionally left vague for the interpretation of parties involved. Specifically, if a complaint is filed to the Board of Ethics, who is well-versed in this material, we can use our best discretion to go over it. People are welcome to ask for advisement or counsel from us on our interpretation. Yet when we found that we tried to get specific or detailed, somebody within our board would mention a scenario that it didn't cover or that it wouldn't fit if we were specific. And so as we kept working through this, it was intentionally left vague, if you will, to allow us the lateral movement to incorporate all the different parts of where this could come up within the city.
Can you give us an example, though, or maybe like a feeling for what material means to you, just so we can get a sense of how that would operate?
So if, if the Lockwoods Matthews Mansion was coming to the city for a funding and a person that was on that funding committee was also on the board of the Lockwood Matthews Mansion, that's a material thing. They should recuse themselves. If that same scenario was coming up and Lockwood Matthews Mansion, I can't think of a great example, but Lockwood Matthews Mansion was saying that they were hosting a party at their, at the mansion and they were, it was more informative. It wasn't a material thing. That's where it would be okay to be involved in the discussion, et cetera. That's not a great example of an alternate. Maybe with an art commission, there are some times where it's more informational than, again, approving financing or things of that nature for the organization. We recognize within the city of Norwalk, a lot of people that are involved serve on multiple boards, multiple committees. So we want them to be able to participate and provide their value. Another example would be on the flip side. If, I know the Poco Building on Wall Street and Isaac Street, the Art Commission is going to get a donated space there for $1 a year, something of that nature. So that's great to be involved in that, have that happen. If somebody on the Art Commission also served on planning and zoning or somebody that was authorizing that, in that scenario, they would recuse themselves from planning and zoning to approve the Art Commission, being able to be permitted for that, if you will, type thing. I don't know that...
Just to piggyback on what Mike is saying, so, so one of the things that, one of the things that we tried to do when going through each of these, these sections of the code was we didn't want to, we didn't want to hamstring and provide, basically not allow the Board of Ethics to have discretion and, and be able to use their common sense in interpreting the code. And so I guess vague and broad are two, are, you could argue it either way. The goal that we were trying to do when looking at each of these sections was not to hamstring the Board of Ethics and basically have to follow something by the letter of the law. One, because it defeats the purpose of giving them the ability and the discretion and to use their judgment as to whether something is a violation of the code. But number two, we can't, we can't legislate every single scenario. And so a lot of the time, what you'll see is if you list something as, well, you know, everything is allowed except, and then you list all these things, if something isn't listed as one of the exceptions, then someone's going to say, okay, well, then it's okay because you didn't list it. And so by, by, by being broad with the language that we're giving them in terms of the conflicts of interest section, it allows the Board of Ethics to use their common sense, their judgment and reasonableness and not be hamstrung by some of the language because there's a lot of gray area in these, in these things. And one of the things that's important is that people know about this so that they can go ask for an advisory opinion if something to them is not clear.
Yeah, Brian, can I, I'm sorry. And I fully appreciate your comment and Michael's comment. My concern is, I think I look at it from the opposite way, that an individual ought to be able to look at this and say, what, what's wrong? What am I doing that's wrong here? Where's the conflict? And while I recognize that there needs to be discretion, I think we should try to give the employee/officer as much guidance as possible, as opposed to giving the board as much guidance, as much discretion as possible. I, I think, I think we're looking at it the wrong way. I think there's a balance, of course, that the commission has to be able to use some discretion. But I think the focus here ought to be able to tell, be, to tell the employees whether what they're doing is right or wrong by looking at the document. If they can't tell, what's the point of it?
Well, so, but my counter to that would be, I don't know exactly, say there's 20-plus different organizations, excuse me, and committees within the city of Norwalk, that we'd have to come up with one specific for each organization because they don't necessarily overlap. DPW would have different instances than the fire department, than the teachers, than planning and zoning, than the redevelopment agency, et cetera. So we'd have to go through each committee or organization that this fell under and describe specific things that could come up in their instance. And that's what we elected not to do, thinking, hitting on points but leaving it broad enough that, I agree with you, it doesn't specifically say what you can and can't do if you're looking for an outline. And yet, I think if you ask us to go, say, be more specific, we'd have to go one by one through each organization and that would add 10-plus pages for specific this section.
I don't think we want to do that, Michael. What I was thinking is like, you know, going back to my paragraph A 5, that little section where it says, "A conflict of interest exists." I think if we expand that where somebody can read that paragraph and go like, oh, if I'm more likely going to benefit disproportionately because of my behavior, then that's a conflict of interest. So maybe if we put that up front where somebody can use that as a standard to consider, how's my behavior, does my behavior benefit me or not benefit me disproportionately?
Well, but to that exact point, we can reposition it so it's more obvious.
Right.
But that's what our thought is. It is in there. And the question that everybody should ask themselves, gee, is this a conflict of interest, is, am I benefiting?
Right.
Disproportionately to others? And if the answer is yes, then whatever you're asking, whatever that falls under, whatever purview, then that's the conflict. And that, as opposed to going through the possibilities of lists. So we can make that more prominent, but that was our feeling in having that there. Is it covered?
So I think we're burying the leaves. So I think we need to lead with, this is what it looks like. And then we can do some of the prohibites and what they shall and shall change do. So I would reorganize this to make that more apparent.
Okay, I mean, so basically, so the goal was in 32-4A was to say, what shall not be done? And so we tried to identify, to be as specific as we could, but generalized things that people should not do. We can certainly reorganize it to perhaps, you know, have something about the, the definition of a conflict of interest before we go through some of these things. But the goal in, in 32-4A and all those numbers enumerated under it was to give everyone, was for, if someone is, if someone has a question as to what they're doing and they go look at 32-4A, you can, you can quickly look at those eight or nine things and say, all right, some of them are clearly not going to apply to your situation, but some of them they might. And so at that point, you might say to yourself, well, I think there's a conflict, but I can go ask. Or I believe there is a conflict, or I believe there's not a conflict. And, and, and so the point is, is that we, we tried to be as specific as we could, but by using generalized situations so that we weren't trying to enumerate, which is impossible, every situation. And one other thing I might add is that when we were doing this, I took a look at, I believe, almost every single other conflict of interest section. conflict of interest section of all the ordinances from all the other municipalities, including the state. And the way that this is constructed, the way the Board of Ethics constructed this section by revising it is basically very similar to how every other municipality has done this. The language here and the way in which we tried to make generalized points, but not get too specific to give people guideposts as opposed to a, a specific yes or no, which allows people to, to have a general idea of what they're doing, but still allowing the Board of Ethics to have some discretion because it's impossible to list every situation. This is the way that all of the other municipalities have done this. That being said, if, if that's something that you want us to work on, we certainly could. But I think that 324A gives a fairly comprehensive guide without getting into specifics to officers and employees as to what is acceptable and what isn't. And then you also have the backup
I think that it's, you know, it's a good, it's good guidepost. There's some wordsmithing that I might do to make it a little bit more.
Right.
I think generally like if we don't bury the lead and then we go through those examples, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
Yeah, Brian, I'm not trying to make you guys list every example.
No, I know.
We went through this last year.
Yes.
And I just think, I mean, I think Lisa's point, I think that would really help and then we can just sort of tighten it up and I think it'll work. But I think right now it's just, it's a little fuzzy and it's hard to tell, but.
So do you, so where it says municipal officer or employee shall. So that's, you know, basically under subsection A, which is the prohibited actions and transactions. So do you think it would be helpful to start out with what in A5 talks about what the conflict of interest is? And then following that, say, a municipal employee or officer shall, and then go through those enumerated numbers? Is that something that you think would be an improvement?
Yeah, I'd reorganize it by starting with A and say conflict of interest and start with your definition. And then I would do B, municipal employee shall, do your list. And then the, what you call conflict of interest, that's the fuzzy one that Tom and I are struggling over about the material part, but maybe we still kind of leave that. And then the exceptions, I think I'd just reorganize it that way. Does anybody else have comments along those lines or improvements on my thinking? Oh, Tom, I think Tom Keegan is making faces, but he's muted.
I will unmute. I think Lisa, yes, that if we define it first and then list examples, that just gives it a, a little better order. It makes it make more sense.
So Lisa, just, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So we're going to have the definition followed by these numerical examples. The Board of Ethics will make, will, will discuss that definitional change to the top and then all of these numbers enumerated under that. Do you then, I know Tom has some questions about 32B.
Can I interject with that, Brian?
Yeah.
So this is my thought or recommendation is follow through subsection A is conflict of interest. Have the definition in there to start. Have subsection one of conflict of interest be what we have is number, letter B right now. Just put that all under the A and then go through, now my computer just froze, there we go. Go through a municipal employee or officer shall and then list those. And then B would become C, which is exceptions, and then list those out in the numerical order they are. And this way you don't have the awkward B, conflict of interest, again, after.
I'm good with that. I'm, I'm good with that structure. Manny, are you trying to be heard?
Yeah, sorry. I was, that's my processing, what everyone's saying, I guess, based, so sorry. I guess, I, I, I'm kind of, I think, I do want to be cognizant of the fact that I don't think we should pigeonhole ourselves as well too. Like, I think we should include maybe a line that says, maybe included but not limited to when we're listing those examples. I, I just like, Mr. Church brings up a great example about like, yeah, this is tough, this is a tough dance from Mr. Livingston's points to Mr. Church's points. But I do think if we include something like that, we won't put ourselves in a position where somebody could say, well, we, it's not on there. So whereas the, the broad part is, is super important, I, I think as well too. At least that's the way I see it.
So just to, to your point, is if you look at subsection B right now, the last sentence of that paragraph, it says, including but not limited to participation. So we can make that more enumerated as well when we bring that to the top and lead with that perhaps. So well taken.
Great. Okay, so, so we'll look at it again next meeting.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll bring that back. The Board of Ethics is supposed to have a meeting on August 27th, next Thursday. So I will bring these comments back to them along with Michael Church. And we'll make some revisions to 324 and then bring it back in September if that's what this committee would like.
I think like that, yep. And if there's anything that somebody wakes up in the middle of the night, get to, get back to Brian. It looks like David wants to be heard.
Do we need to vote to table this and send it back to the Board of Ethics? Because our, it is discuss and vote on code section, so.
Oh, good point. It's out of procedure. Do I have to, do I have to vote to table it, Brian? We can. It doesn't hurt, right?
I don't think it hurts to say that you're going to table it and ask the Board of Ethics to consider the, consider amendments that have been discussed here tonight and then we can always bring it back.
All in favor of tabling it and talking about it next month, raise your hand.
Aye.
Everybody's in agreement on that. Alright, so now what we're going to do is we're going to get into our executive session.
Just real quick, wanted to thank you all for reviewing this and your feedback. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Michael.
Stay safe and healthy.
For being part of
Thank you, Michael. See you on Thursday.
Thanks, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so all of us are, except for Brian, no Larry, right? Larry's going to stay on this. The rest of us are going to leave this meeting entirely, go to our executive session and we'll see you in a minute.
Well, Lisa, we need a motion to go into it.
Oh, yes, can you do it, Tom?
I'll move it.
Yeah, before you go, before you go in, Brian, if you could stay on or someone, someone can say it. I'm going to make you, because I have to start this session under a different Zoom account.
Larry, do I stay, do I stay here until you come back?
Yeah, stay here until I come back. I'm going to make you host and I'm going to have to start the session. And give me about a minute, but everyone can get out of
Lisa, your, your invitees for other than committee members will be who, for the record?
You, Darren and just our committee and Brian. Brian will join us as well.
Alright, I'm leaving now.
So all in favor of Tom's motion to go into executive session? It's unanimous. Alright, good. So see you in a minute. Leave this. Is your meeting on?
Oh, yeah.
Coming out of executive session and we are missing Kadim Roberts from our meeting. And we're waiting for everybody else to rejoin. I think we have everybody else except for Miss Roberts.
Yeah, I think Kadim looked like he dropped off in executive session, right?
Yeah, his laptop died. He's charging it and.
Okay, so I'm just, we're coming out of executive session and no actions were taken. And at this time though, we have two proposed action items. Our first proposed action item is for the committee to hereby acknowledge receipt of Sentry Protective Services, Inc. The response is dated August 12th, 2020 concerning Hans Jean versus Sentry Protective Services, Inc., file number 50470-0059. So do I do anything other than say, we just vote that through, right, Brian?
Yes. You're just, you're just going to acknowledge, you acknowledge the receipt of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not, and then the second, but the second item we vote on, is that right, to adopt the findings? So our proposed action here is to adopt the findings of the Chair of the Norwalk Ordinance Committee, Lisa Shanahan, pursuant to chapter 62-8, parentheses B and parentheses, parentheses 2 and parentheses of the Code of the City of Norwalk in the matter of Hans Jean versus Sentry Protective Services, Inc., file number 50470-0059. And all of the committee members have read the findings and the vote now is to accept the findings as described. So can I see a show of hands for the acceptance of the findings? A motion. Tom, will you move it for us?
Sure.
And now can we vote on adopting the findings? And, oh, Kadim's back. Kadim has rejoined the meeting and so it is a unanimous vote that we are adopting the findings. And what I'd like to make the record clear, I want the record to reflect that the findings will be posted along with the committee member, our committee minutes on the city website. And also this decision can be obtained from the Office of Corporation Counsel upon request. And Darren, I will be asking you to please send and circulate a copy of the findings to both the complainant and to the respondent within the next, within the next several business days before Friday. And I will send you a signed copy of the findings so that you might send it to them as soon as possible. There's other matters that I, with regard to this that I may have overlooked that Darren or Brian
Just for the record, it's, it's going to be a finding of non-compliance.
Yes.
Under 62-4C and 62-6A.
I just want to thank you, the Chair, Mr. Langella and Darren particularly for all your hard work on this. It is a new thing and I know it's a tough learning process, but thanks for doing all it.
It's been interesting. So it's, we've enjoyed it. And Darren, yes, you, you really worked very hard in 45 days in order to meet all the deadlines and we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And Manny, thank you for being a good partner. So I'd entertain a different motion right now. If anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn. Tom Keegan's got it tonight. Alright, thank you, everybody. So appreciate everybody's efforts. Darren, I'll get you what you need and it's 8:15 and we're done. Thank you, everybody.
Be safe, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Be safe.
Rest of the week.